Then that key switch I told you about it, might have been prolonging it, so when I had time, I could get it fixed. Well, this morning, after getting the door fixed, the key wouldn't work. So we finally got it working and he ordered a fact at the same time we're working on a door and...
It's fixed.
It's all fixed?
Yeah, it is technically.
Okay, I didn't know. We went over, I had to get that fixed.
Mm-hmm.
Good, it's ready to go. My truck here, right now, we had to bring it down. It was with the...
The death pump and the wiring harness.
Yeah, we should have a bill somewhere you can get it.
Clark's?
No, right line, Charlie boys.
No, not here.
No, that's, I can't explain it. I wouldn't get it.
Well, that should all been warranty. That's all part of the good warranty package, I believe. It should have been.
That's where we're hoping. So we're just waiting to see if we got the invoice or whatever we have.
Is this the second time?
I've had a knock sensor and a wiring harness issue before, but that's the first time for the death.
Okay.
Was it broken wire or something?
You went and picked it up.
Yeah, they didn't give me no, no flips or nothing. He handed me the keys, said, "All ready to go." I had home. Right, then we get that cover by Hamilton down there.
There was a water washed out the... Yeah, I walked over.
I couldn't get over to it today. It was bubbling up there. I did go down and get me the way on the backside with your daughter and he went, "Got his boots on, you want to put a stake out here?" Then it turned down twenty-four zero, so ain't nothing been done with it.
Where was the water coming from?
Well, that Alvin Culvert there, goes across into the pond. It's that way by Eastland.
Is there a hole in the culvert?
Sounds like there's many.
Is that my backyard you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. Sounds like there was water just spraying out of the ground when the pressure was high.
But it's been an issue with that tower to the deer, to the deer. You know, I told him, "You're gonna have to get together with a slick board, you have to come to head here."
Well, Mark asked.
And it was a bungle.
I was recycling and he came and got me.
I told you over there.
Went over and looked at it. I mean, that's quite a ways off from the road. I mean, it's, it's in the midst of all of the properties, so my first reaction to it was, "Who put that there?"
It was the deer, back, sixty-nine, I believe, when I got home.
Okay, did, did the homeowners put that in to make law or did... I mean, there's a brook up above.
Well, it comes all the way from town, right way up there. Everything come down.
Here I have it. This is open ditch all the way to...
Yeah, it's open ditch pretty good.
And what's his name plugged the culvert here a couple of years back with firewood?
Yeah, I got a piece of wood in there. My guy, he's been out of grain in it, in the, in it, and we had to dig down to find the pole. And it took it in that fire end and the piece of wood couldn't get by, so they plugged it up.
So who buried the pipe from there down through?
I have no idea. Well, the town did it. I have no idea.
The town did it?
Mike Donovan, grandfather dug it.
There must have been an open ditch in there one time.
It was, yeah. Kept flooding out the house tonight with Pat Donovan, he was working for that. And he was nineteen years old. He's sixty-nine now. So then fifty years. But there was a little house out back here somewhere. I don't know.
There used to be a big, big house here, the old Doc Adams.
I remember the big house.
Very big house, sat out right close to the corner. And just below it, it was, it was such a big house that it had a little house down back. Millers lived there. I remember it was Millers. And they were caretakers for the big house way, way back. It was like a caretaker's house. And that was between Barry's house and this big one. And when, I think the house burned, did that?
Uh, I don't know. I wasn't telling at that time. It's hard to find.
But anyway, they tore it down and, and then it became a vacant lot and then Eastwoods bought it, put the garage and then a house.
But it kept getting flooded out, flooded out, flooded out every year.
The little house, the little house with the open ditch.
So they decided to put a culvert in there and eliminate it, but I don't know, the house is gone.
But back then, the way everything was, you don't know if they hired the town to do it.
No, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
And there's no record, so.
Well, I think we have to get together with Shane or somebody and find them reliable for it or whatever.
It's outside of the, of the town's right of way.
It is, it is. It's outside of the state highway.
Right, and that's what I was looking at is, we don't own the land.
No.
We have a right of way. So the state has a right of way. So being that far outside of the right of way, it's like, who did this?
And as a rule, the state does it, I know, and I don't believe the town would ever do. I mean, as a rule, we allow an entrance to a driveway a certain length.
Right.
You know, because anything longer, it's just a hell of a lot more maintenance to thaw out if it freezes or do whatever, so you keep it within a... So, you know, we wouldn't ever do something like that because of...
The two hundred feet?
The maintenance.
Well, at least or more.
Yeah, three hundred anyway.
And from what I can see in the hole, things that big around.
Yeah, it's big. Yeah, it's a big culvert.
Only, I think it's twenty-four inch, eighty, twenty-four thirty. Can tell by measuring this culvert over here, but...
Did you see the lake we had above Church Street? The culvert was frozen. It was a lake with all that rain.
We couldn't get to it.
But again, you know, when they plow at the church, aren't they pushing it right over the end of that culvert and blocking that?
Breaking pool.
Well, combined with my snow machine the other day, it looks like something, a groomer or something pushed it and it kind of...
I was gonna check after this.
Went into the ditch a little more.
I was gonna check.
I didn't look in either, but I just assumed.
Ernie does something with his snow. He takes it all the yard. I wonder if he's dumping it over the end of it. And I was gonna go look today and I was, I was busy, I didn't get there. But if he is, that's gonna be...
To put a culvert in that size all the way down to there, that's gonna be a lot of money.
Stay away from my greenhouse.
The one in there is aluminum. They put it in aluminum to last many years. But you're helping, you're only good for twenty years.
And again, we don't know if the landlord's...
Twenty years.
I mean, we gotta get, if the town is to fix it, you gotta give rights away.
That's right.
Eastwoods to get on the people's property to do this? I mean, it's like...
It's quite a project, yeah. So if you do it, do it right. You know, you just dig it and lay the plate. You've got to clean up, you've got all the groundwork.
Put it back to a brook. I mean, we wouldn't...
Well, it's it.
You guys gotta, you gotta decide which, who it is, who's it ain't.
Right, but we wouldn't have a culvert three hundred feet long.
No.
No.
That's impossible.
We have a problem with him hooking on to them like Ernie did over here, you know. That's probably what caused it. I'm not saying, but you know, it's... You don't make them, anything over forty feet, you can't saw them anyway, they'd be free.
You know, anything like that, they've got to take responsibility for it. So taking responsibility is taking the cost.
Yeah. Well, Ernie gave to me about that one. He said, "We're gonna follow him." No, I said, "You're gonna follow him." And he made it about fifty feet long, maybe longer.
Because we don't do driveway culverts anymore. We just do roadway culverts, so... That's no different in my opinion.
It's not. But we can't flood out the hell down there and turn around and get sued. We gotta come to head here.
Well, the flooding, the flooding, the holding, the holding back of the water is the pond.
Yes.
The pond's full.
Pond was full.
And the pond was full of water, and once that happens, it used to be a hell of a lot worse years ago.
I know.
Even with an open ditch, because that would be just a pond down there, right up into the road.
I remember that.
I remember that.
We had a dam there before.
Right, and that's the thing.
Dam's under.
And, and it was holding the water back and anything, I'm assuming it was an open ditch then, but I remember that being a whole pond right out into the road.
But you did too. That knocking dam out there.
But I don't think that's gonna cure it because the pond is filled in.
Yeah.
And if those ditches aren't kept open to keep those open, which the last time the state come in and cleaned the end of their culvert, maybe better.
Yeah.
You went in and opened the beaver dam and then they cleaned the end of the culvert.
This water that was getting around Cor's house, I don't know, water zoo, Jim's ex-wife.
Yeah.
The state's DI was taking it, that saved that house from getting flooded this one, thankfully. But it weren't messing, going in a window by just a little bit, you know. And the state's DI was taking it and handling it well. It was just...
But there was a lot of water too.
There was.
But this pipe goes right into that DI, right?
Supposedly not.
No, it crosses the road and goes into pond. Got a DI over there on the parking lot by the old circle. That, that DI there comes across the road and this one hooks into that one.
Okay.
And this one on the sidewalk here on this side.
I thought this pipe that went down hooked into that DI. It crosses the road itself.
Crosses the road itself. And this one here, the one that the state maintained, it comes all the way from East and Avenue, comes all the way over.
So are those pipes side by side down there, the DI pipe and the other one?
No, you go there and look at that forty feet part. Wow, one on one side, the old town grid, one on the other.
There's several pipes down there. It's almost...
There's, there's, there's no way that private individuals would have dug across the road and put a pipe in.
No.
They had to be...
You get, you get the cross.
State had to be involved or somebody.
And badly, you don't remember who did that.
Oh, I wasn't, I don't know.
Back when it was dirt, do anything you want.
Yeah.
Well, there might have been an existing state culvert and they just hooked the pipe to it.
And that's what Tim did.
Should be some plant somewhere that shows that.
Shane's manager looked at it before.
But there's gonna be a headache for we get down. You know, it really is.
Well, there was ice floating across the road, highway in Johnson. So having that, you know, it just, there was problems.
It's been, it's been a long time since I seen that amount of water going over the dam. I, I check it, you know, that. Wow, it wasn't going over there. It was like a, it was like that big one down Cambridge. So the water would just go on.
I tell you, you know you've got some water when that culvert down by Scott's house is full. And it's shooting out the other end about thirty feet from here. You know you've got some water.
Yep.
And I've seen it. And standing on that sucker, the whole road shaking, you think it's gonna leave it.
Any minute.
Then you get a little excited.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Full pipe.
Full pipe.
I was trying to clean the beavers out down Buller Road, that second bridge. They were in there and I went down and I had to ask them to come in and dig out the beaver dam. Because they, they had it dammed up pretty good. Well, four feet from the top, where it dug it out. I saw a beaver come out of hell and he left and never came back. I think the water was so current that he just...
Well, that's something, I guess, in the spring will have to, the people are gonna have to get together and come in, but I...
I asked him to come to the meeting, but apparently they need that.
My thought is, it's, it's gonna have to go back to an open ditch.
But like that, you gotta hold the ground down there and Barry sees the water bubbling up, you know. I saw the water bubbling up. Tell me you're reliable for that hole. We're gonna fix that hole. I'm not going down, I'm not gonna do a thing.
No, you can't do it on somebody's pond. That's off our right of way.
Right.
You know, nothing I can do. That's what I told Jim that day.
I mean, that's, that's the base.
Someone proves to us that it's ours, it's on their land.
That's right.
Okay.
Exactly.
I, I can't, you know, I can't go on somebody else's land and do stuff.
No, we can't just go dig a ditch, I sure. You'd like to, they put the arctic line there, you didn't get, they, they can deal.
Right.
You may up there, put a water line up there by us and anything's all else.
In no way.
Like in Eastland.
This doesn't affect our roads.
No.
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 No. Okay, so that's, that's the key.
It's gonna affect the table.
If our, our roads are affected, then we need to take action.
Yeah, it ain't gonna.
If, if our roads are not affected, then...
Water running point right down through. Coming out the other end somewhere.
It's been like that for years. I, there was a hole there and I would see the hole and I'd fill it in. And then mysteriously, everything I then filled would disappear. And did it again, about twenty feet up towards Donovan's. There's like a little soggy spot there, you know, so it's leaking up there too. And, you know, I, I planted stuff there and everything died, so... You know, it was still there, so it never did anything like it did just recently.
I think the water was a higher...
I've heard that about the water.
Water was a higher, had to come out somewhere after it came out to this point.
So it's really not gonna do nothing unless, unless it gets out of control like it did. But that was extraordinary rain. So it's really not doing nothing. I, I gotta deal with a little hole there that I can't fill in and a soggy spot.
It probably wouldn't do much if the pond wasn't holding it back.
Right.
If it could get away down there, but when the pond becomes full and it's running over the dam, it's gonna back everything up. And that's what's gonna create the pressure.
Yeah, and I think that's what happened.
The Facebook people are all excited. There was a hundred shares for that, a hundred shares.
It was a perfect storm.
They love that video.
I told you nineteen years ago when they did that, you were in for that. He's sixty-nine.
Fifty years ago.
I'm just, you know, I, I, he looked bad the other day and I asked him that. He had the answer for me, what I wanna know.
What else you got?
Yeah, Scotty.
Just go ahead.
Don't like it.
Or is he, what'd he say? Oh.
I'm gonna put on a cable.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry. I'm gonna go get it.
Forgot to mumbling. I didn't know what it was.
I was ready to say hoop, don't CCI, we gotta go get him.
I'll be right back. Go way down in the office.
No, no, no. I'm tired, but I ain't that tired.
I'm tired, but I ain't that tired.
Well, Scotty, I, I got her.
Is that mop or what is it?
I don't know, I didn't take it out, play with it, I didn't unroll it. All I know is this thing here was stuck into the pipe. It's in the bag and it had them in touch. I almost could be a wash, wash mittler.
Yeah, it looks like it's part of a string mop actually.
It does look like it, it's stringy.
It's a mop, these are mop.
Sit there, can you sit there, I can get a better take on that.
Like I said at the last time.
Yeah, that's my, I talked to my attorney, he said that he don't care what it is.
Well, no, but I should, I would say if I could get a mop handle down there without a head.
I don't even have a mop like that, she was in a stupid miracle, or you on TV and shit, you know. Yeah, he, my attorney said he didn't give a crap if it was a frickin' moose stuck down there, cause he said, this is what he told me. Don't come here and argue, fight you guys back and forth, saying it's gonna get you nowhere, either to eat the people.
That's right, you're gonna come to a red.
Said, Scott, how, over the year, how many years you lived there, I said twenty-three, twenty-four years. He said, how many times has that been worked on, many times over the years, because you, like he said, you've gotta prove that I did it. He said, over the years, people have been, and I think some could have dropped in, who knows who did what, and he said, so this is what he told me. If you guys wanna keep pursuing this, send me a certified letter to me, say you wanna pursue it, and we'll go from there. And he said, there's no sense going back and forth fighting, you know, he says.
Right, I mean, that's what it's come down.
Yeah.
You're saying you didn't do it, and I know we didn't do it, I mean, I didn't.
That's what he said, he said, you know, who knows, but he said, he said, people, and I had that hole for years, he said, if this goes accord, it'll get thrown out of court. So he told me, he just laughed about it, he said, this is one of those things that happens, Scott, and he said, that's what you tell them. If you guys wanna pursue it, send me a certified letter, we'll go from there. Instead of fighting back and forth, and, yeah.
That's why we asked you to come tonight.
Yeah.
No, you're gonna settle, do something.
Yeah, I just, you know, my wife's like, she's all about it, and I said, she goes, I don't use that type of, use those frigging.
You asked me for it, I know.
Yeah, I'm glad you did that, yeah, yeah.
The little girl, trying half a day trying to fight you.
Yeah, I don't wanna fight you and him and.
You're gonna fight me.
We're not, we're, we're not, we're not fighting.
Yeah.
We're discussing, okay?
Yeah.
Fighting is when you start poking people, and we don't poke people.
Yeah, or play it, yeah.
So what do you wanna do?
Not much we can do, is there?
He said, he didn't do it.
Come to some sort of an agreement.
Yeah.
What's, what did it cost to replace things? What's the total bill?
Then I, this is another thing too, I had a guy from, they would do a big plumbing and do sewer system. He found a couple of issues that if I were to wanna cause a stink, it costs you guys a lot of money. He goes, is there a thermal overload in that unit, this thing should never burnt out, does that, but he says there's a thermal overload on it, you wanna kick it, kicked it out, but he said they doing this all the time.
But you went out and put your reset there, you said everything was working, you told me that the motor.
I, no, it, it was buzzing, I told you, there's nothing they could do, remember it was buzzing?
Yeah.
I said, that is, it was just one, so I didn't touch it, so. He said, there should be a thermal overload on that, that should never put the motor out. And that's what he told me, that's, this guy's from, um, I'm trying to think, it's a big corporation out in Broughton, they got friends of mine. And they checked it and they go, this thing's not set up right, and they said, when the sewer pumps, if I wanna cause a stink, that's what they said. Where it pumps up into the pipe up there, it's not up to code, that's what they said. I don't wanna cause any problems, I don't wanna make you guys fix things or anything like that. He said, back when it was done, but he said, if I, if this doesn't be a stink, he said, then you can do that, and I said, I don't wanna cause any stink, I just wanna end it.
We need to do.
Well, it should have been put in up to code.
Yeah.
When it was put in, you know, he said, I could, like, he said, oh, maybe that backboard, well, you can tell them to fix it, cause it's gonna happen again, so he said.
They can't back. They can backflow.
Yeah, yeah, but he said it's not the right height, it's not to go.
He looked at it?
Yes, on my lawn over here, where the drops down in.
He opened the manhole?
Yeah.
Not supposed to do that.
Well, you did, so I'm sorry about that.
Could be charge of trespassing.
That's all I want, but I'm sorry, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, you're not supposed to do that.
I didn't know that, it's just.
Yeah, I told you at the last meeting.
No, that, the building thing.
Yeah, but it's all the same.
So anyway.
No, don't, we're not gonna get.
What, what do you wanna do? What was the bill?
What was the?
Nineteen hundred, right, nineteen, I don't know.
Yeah, but the pump, that ain't counting all the.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, I, I really don't have to figure it, I, Denise got all the bills.
Yeah, we have to go back.
Oh, yeah, you have to go back a lot, I.
That cord, I mean, the system has been upgraded.
I had Johnny here for I don't know how many days.
This is everything, told me, if I pay anything, then I open myself up to the next one, so he told me, if I pay anything, I open myself up to the next one. So he told me, he said, you cannot do that, so, cause then.
Did you put the no trespass on?
Then you're admitting guilt, that's basically what he told me.
So you're telling us here that even whatever we come up with, you're not willing to pay anything?
Yeah, I can't.
Is that what you're telling us, you're not willing to pay anything?
I, I did do it.
Is that what you're willing, is that what you're saying?
That's what I have to say.
And we're not, we're not saying that you did it.
Yeah.
Where it is your pump on your system.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
And I said, don't argue about what.
It's nobody else's on it, but you.
Like I said, people had it out of that for years.
Right. I was just thinking like ten percent, you know.
How much is ten percent?
What?
That was nineteen hundred, I'll do a hundred and fifty, I'll do a hundred and fifty, that's opening, I'm not supposed to do.
I don't care, I don't have a problem with that.
Favorite one pumping.
Why would me, I'd be happy with that.
Are you in agreement, we're in agreement.
Favorite one pumping, you know, I'm not.
It is, it has been repaired, you got a new pump, you got new wiring and whatever else.
And there will be a new box this spring, but they fucking cold as when I ain't gonna go down there. Ain't gonna send my boy down there, he's like, oh, here's somebody else to get it.
I'll bring you the money next week.
Okay, no problem.
Sounds good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
I can relax tonight.
Very hard.
But it settles, Scott.
Yes, have a good day, guys.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, what do you do?
Yeah.
I don't get the answer, but I did my best.
Well, yeah, I understand that, and we asked you to, you know, keep a running toll of what it was, and. But you get, you get to the, the hard spot in a rock or.
And we did a picture, you know, and I had five witnesses, and they came out of the bike, I couldn't have any more of that.
We certainly need to put signs up there saying.
Yeah, I know.
And then, we gotta do that.
But you've been told.
Well, apparently it doesn't seem to matter.
I don't, it never would.
Well, even the manhole he opened, the manhole that it goes to is up the street, it's not on his lawn.
No.
And we, somebody opened that manhole. Cut their fingers off, who's responsible for that?
Somebody gets hurt falling into a man.
Boy, got my freaking rock right there, dump it down there, plug the hole.
Yeah.
He ain't gonna never gonna get it out.
Maybe the water and sewer board, water board or whatever, can write a letter saying that.
Like, if they cool, we get some tiny foot down there.
We're good.
Shouldn't be opening up, and we need no trespass.
I gotta keep showing Ike a volume, I think.
Is there a lock on there or anything that, that, it's really don't, shouldn't have one anyway, cause if you needed to send. Somebody down, you'd have to be there with a key.
It's hard to keep track of all them keys.
Oh, I know, it is, it is, it gets to be too much.
Not yet.
Yeah.
I'll do something in there.
No, it just, it just makes it difficult, you have something like that, come through the pump.
We own water and sewer?
Yes.
We got a problem with an arsenic. Tank up there, one of my vessels just sprung a pinhole leak.
In a tank?
One of them ceramic tanks.
Vessel, they guys.
A vessel, yeah.
Vessel?
Yeah.
As they call it.
You can see the little dinky.
I got some spray stuff at home, it's supposed to spray onto it, it'll stop the leak. That stuff works pretty darn good.
I'm gonna bring it down.
My, my son patched a hole in his pool, like that.
Yep, yep.
That's under some serious pressure, yeah.
But I got some of that tape there, when they do it underwater.
Yeah.
They'd go, they'd take a boat together.
Yeah, but this is pushing out.
Yeah, but they, they showed it, I wanted to.
They say it's supposed to do it.
Good, that's good, thank you.
I wanted to.
We still need to do something. Can you release the pressure on that for a, a bit until, while he puts.
It releases the pressure when it.
Okay.
Drains after.
That's the time to do it.
Is there any warranty on that stuff when we do it?
It's out of warranty.
Of course it is.
Of course it is.
I talked to Adage, um, which of course they're coming to do our other system in April. He said, love to fix it for us, he's supposed to be getting me numbers, but their laborers just automatically charges us for a full day, which is nine hundred and fifty bucks. And then the vessel, and then do, we take that old media and put it in, or do.
Or change the boat.
Or do we contact a local plumber and see what we can give a vessel for and do it ourselves, or. Slap something down there so it stops leaking.
Yeah, we put something on there so it stops leaking. Quick fix is to try and get it stopped leaking, but the other fix is, I think we should check with. A local plumber and see if any of them.
Yeah, I've been.
And what they would have for prices.
Granite maybe.
Well, we'd check with Netto's or Fred's and.
Is, is the media in there anywhere close to being changed time wise?
We just changed it last spring.
That's what, yeah, cause it's what, three years?
But my question, I'm not entirely sure how we would take out the used media. And without, cause you gotta basically suck it out.
Right.
Done with the back.
What was the outfit one that we had do that with that backdrop?
Hardigans, but that ruins it, you know, they sucked it into a sewer truck.
Oh, 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 cause they're getting rid of it.
Yes, yes. Yes. What about them to fix the vessel?
Who?
Hardigans?
They just were.
They just do that backdrop, okay, I, that was just a question.
My question is, what caused the leak? Now, it's fiberglass vessel, there's no corrosion, there occurs on fiberglass. So, was it impacted from the outside accidentally?
No. Or nothing moved around.
No, no, I mean, in the shipping?
On per.
When they pressurized, especially when, when we initially started it up, when we had a lot of water up there, they pressurized.
Yep.
You know, you, you, the water, you can, and it's ceramic.
So there is a, in other words, a defect in material and or workmanship, where it was a thin spot.
That's possible, yeah.
I mean, someone's gotta tell me how a fiberglass ceramic tank springs a leak, they either.
In the middle of it.
Right, it's either damaged from the outside.
In the snow.
Right, or it was manufactured improperly, and the expansion contraction has caused it a weak spot and. So if that's the case, it's gonna get worse, the expansion contraction is gonna make that thing get worse, not that.
Well, it totally eventually, you're gonna.
That little pinhole's turning to twenty.
Right now, it's, it's really not affecting anything, it makes the floor a little less spot.
I tried some of my tape there, I get that night tape.
I understand, but we gotta do a long term fix.
Well, and my concern with tape is, that's public drinking water. We just wanna put an adhesive on it, I don't know, when the state comes and inspects it, they will approve.
That, it's a temporary fix.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, do you get a new one?
Because I would almost think if you have fiberglass. I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, it's good refiberglass.
Right, but depending on what's on the inside. And is it a ceramic tank on the inside that has been fractured?
Yes.
And the fiberglass shell on the outside.
But you really can't get in there to tell, you, you'd never be able to.
No, you only look down that hole, and I, I did.
Well, it's four right now.
Cause I was curious, what's down inside of there, when they start, oh, oh, you got the big canister there. Yeah, those are eight, I thought there'd be some place for nobody going on there.
So could you have a conversation with Adage?
Yeah, the guy's pretty good.
Relative to what, I mean, we've been, we seemed to have, I had a good relationship with them.
This fellow was somebody I'd never talked to, I sent him pictures, I took a bunch of pictures of it and sent him that picture and showed you, and. He got them, emailed me, he's gonna work up some numbers and get back to me, cause, you know.
If we, if we could just find out, you know, has he had any other failures like this, and is there, is it, it's a string of it? Is it a defect in material and or workmanship, you know, building those things?
Curious to know how thick that tank is.
And is it gonna happen again, is it something we need to plan for? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I will ask them questions.
I'm concerned that if it's a tank in, in, inside of the tank, inside of the fiberglass, then that may be pressurizing.
If you have a ceramic inside liner, you want something that's gonna protect that, like a thermos that you go get your coffee, right, that's the thing, you know?
It, it is supposed to be good for a hundred and fifty PSI, I don't believe it's ever come anywhere near that.
Right, so, what caused it? And we gotta get a new one, we gotta get a new one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be cheaper to buy it from Adage than it is for Fred's.
Put a patch on it and even like a rubber band or.
It's not gonna heal.
Well, my concern is if they're coming and for this one, and if we're gonna have them do it, we wanna get it lined up.
Right, exactly.
So it's gonna work, because I don't, I, I don't know if we can scoop that media out to reuse it, I don't, cause it's.
Good question for Adage.
Yes.
If you can, then do we watch them?
Well, if you've had sanitized brand new stuff.
Like a local plumber to give us the price too?
I would like to start working with Netto's.
Just to see?
Chris is local and he's supposed to be one of the best plumbers around, you know, I'm sure what you get.
Yep.
He does a lot of work around this area.
And, you know, I think the plumbing industry is getting into that, because there's so, getting to be so much of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, prices might be a lot cheaper.
Fred, you can throw that away now.
I didn't wanna throw it, her bucket, have a stinking bank, come Monday morning.
We're done with that.
Put that in your archives that you can keep when you retire and you.
I got garbage I gotta bring up after the meeting right now.
I'm gonna put it in your, put it in your mailbox. Linda, go get it, what's up Jerry?
My wife would appreciate that.
Now I just, I would do my job.
System, water system, everything's.
It's the only thing I had, water's been really good.
That filter, I gotta get hold of it, I haven't heard a thing or nothing.
Denise did say the water bill was a little high at the reservoir, which, I don't know, it's cause of extra cold, we added a heat tape.
On the electric bill?
She said it was up a little bit, or, I don't know, a couple hundred bucks.
So we put a heat tape on here.
You know.
Did you pump more?
I have, cause I've left it, the ductless well pump all night a few times when it's really cold, to just see headaches.
People are still running the pipe water, it must be.
Well, it's just, it's, when it's twenty blowout there, it's hard on my fingers.
Yeah, well, it probably is better to keep it running.
Well, it. It has, it's been a good well, I have not sucked it dry. But we don't want, no. Yes, the box is supposed to.
But has the usage been up as far as water?
I think we are very close the last two months, I, I do have the numbers, but it's hard to tell with how much.
I didn't know with the cold, you know, people were leaving it running, I just, just asking.
It, it's hard, the sewer number is ever, always pretty steady and the water numbers, depends on the ductless well, what it gives us, you know, we don't know.
Yeah.
A little frost is going in the ground quite a ways.
And there are days when we pump a lot, and there are days when we don't pump a lot. And I do believe, yes, we got some faucets running.
Oh, yeah, oh, I think we do, that's why I just didn't wonder with, if the usage.
Always do.
Anything else? Anything else, Fred? Good. Good. I haven't met, yeah, I didn't meet Dan.
Yeah.
I did, he was Christmas time. Have you, have you guys both met Dan?
Well, God, Fred sent me with him to educate him. Either he educated me or I educated him.
He couldn't drive the truck, so I had to have a chauffeur and he went and then, and it really helped him a lot though, you know, he watched you and he, he learned how to do things.
Fred, don't give me a compliment, I'll feel bad.
I get it, I get it, I didn't have time, I couldn't take it with me and then, you know.
It was all his fault.
I know it, and I ain't give that one up yet.
I figured I'd stir that up again for you.
School is asking us to. Snowball the sidewalk, they bought a snowblower and we kinda did that. So I just wondered which one of you guys wanna get before the snowbowl?
Right now, in the way.
I, you know. But, there's a lot of.
There's a liability issue, Steve wants you to snowball it, so we can send it.
No, I, we, we know that.
I know, we've been through that, but.
And.
This was unsuspected.
I'm a snowblower guy.
I know you are, yeah.
And if you don't deal with that snow prior to people stepping on it or driving on it, or the plow truck from the state blowing it. A snowblower just rides up on top and doesn't do anything, you need, so somebody needs to get there at three thirty, three o'clock in the morning, clean that sidewalk and keep it clean while.
Well, the, so, the thing of it is, the snowblower will do only so much, so you're gonna need actually two rigs, you're gonna need a snowblower and something with a blade to cut it.
Yeah.
At times, you know, you're gonna need both and it just, it's, it's gonna get very expensive.
Cause I had a snowblower too once, I knew it was only one winter and I sold it. I didn't have time to go home at nine o'clock at night.
But just from my experience watching them in the city, they have snowbores.
Yes, I do.
But ninety percent of their usage is the plow, it cleans their sidewalks, ninety percent of it is the plow, because. Like Steve said, even with the bigger machine with a snowblower on it, it rides up on top and it's not cleaning it, so now you gotta come along with the plow and get rid of it.
But you can take a snowblower and stack cement blocks on it, so it's heavy enough and it will hold it down to do it, but then it's hard to pick it up and move it around.
But that's not good.
Anyone with cement block falls off in the front of it?
Yeah.
Ask me, no, I don't.
It's like that someone to hit on the end of your driveway, isn't it?
Just ask me.
So are we on to this because that's unfinished business, will we tell them about that?
Yeah, we're just, I wanted to find out from the road crew, and they, and they share our same concerns, the liability with sanding and something.
We don't have anything small enough to go down the sidewalk and sand, right?
And not destroy everybody's lawn.
Well, then, I'm.
You know, we could go down there.
Yeah, no, 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 I.
Where are you gonna blow it, you gonna blow it in the state highway or you gonna blow it in some people's front doorstep?
So that's a city of Newport thing, we just chuck it back and forth.
That's what they do.
Eventually it disappears somewhere.
It wears out.
Yeah.
It's gets enough salt mixed in it, that's.
But you can dig it off, but then you gotta pick it up, you can, the tape gonna blow it back to you.
Did you remember that when your cleanup guy comes that we were, you remembered to ask him about that?
You always need to get a little extra out of him every year.
But, I mean, if you guys.
What he give us for advice for doing it.
If you guys could think about this, it, it is a sidewalk and it is in our town. Can it be utilized somehow, I mean, I don't know.
They do have a snowblower that they got.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but it's still a little like booty.
Well, they make little tractors with plows and sanders too, they, 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 there's Fairfield or Tanko, they sell municipal stuff to take care of that.
The other thing, you know, we, we've got shut offs and they're in the middle of the sidewalk, they're on the side of the sidewalk there, you know, and frost brings those up. And you ran into one of them and now you've created a problem there, that makes it, it makes it difficult too. You gotta look at all these options of what could happen, right?
We actually only got one of them.
Just one?
The one of them I'm gonna hire here.
But the rest of them are on the outside?
Yeah, on the edge.
Yeah.
How, how.
So you gotta be careful with those.
Like right on the edge?
About two feet on their lawn.
Okay, so they shouldn't be going off the sidewalk, two feet, you wouldn't think, but.
Depends how long a wing they got.
Yeah.
Well, you take the grid or go down there.
I mean, it would be nice. If we could keep the kids out of the street, what'd the school say, how many people?
She told, at the last meeting, they said sixteen kids walk.
Yeah.
I'm surprised with today's standards that they allow them to walk.
I don't, we pay a lot for bussing.
They go around the street, I'm surprised that they even walk.
So they come here and then go up the hill or?
I do not know that.
The only ones that come from up here, I believe, go straight across Murphy's Lawn, I've seen.
Pretty sure.
And they will follow from, uh, with the big box, she comes with Hilker waiting, it goes right up east to the Ample and goes back down around.
But the kids, I, one of the kids I see walking generally just go across Murphy's Lawn.
All we did, went over the kid, that's what we went.
I don't know who walks down the main road.
Well, the high school's set here and part of the grade school, and the rest of the grade school was the town hall and Hot Lunch. And everybody went from here to Hot Lunch and they went across Murphy's.
Yep, you go down there, go, go down up there.
Everybody from here that went, because Hot Lunch was down there, everybody from the high school up here or grade school went down there for lunch.
I think if everybody's working on it, thinking about it, that we can somehow come to a conclusion of doing something somehow, whether it is doing away with that.
But did she ask for?
Utilizing something else somewhere, I don't know where these kids going down the sidewalk are going. You know, if we could find out where they're headed, do they have to go to the corner or they, can they do a crosswalk across Murphy's, I don't know. Or maybe it's just to get to the store?
Well, you're like the daycare down here, it's not daycare no more, but there's some kids in there, they come out and they're going down the sidewalk.
Basically what she's looking for right now is if we'll split the cost, there's somebody to hire to do this.
Right, I read that.
That's basically what they're looking for.
So what would you like in a minute so that she will have an answer to that question? Are you willing to split the dollars right now? That's basically what she's looking for.
Where do we get the money from?
Who will be hiring and who ends up with his liability?
The, the town, the school.
No, the town.
The town.
Well, they want town to hold that, anyone.
And they resend the bill to the school and they pay half of it, but it becomes a town employee.
They use their snowblower.
You don't show up some days, you ain't gonna fuck your stove.
Well, I guess we have to go back to them with who's, uh, the liability of this person.
Right. Who's paying the benefits?
Who's, who's gonna pay the liability?
This guy a first time guy or is this a part time, that's what I was thinking.
I think right now they got the janitor doing it, don't they?
If we put it out.
You don't do it on the driveway.
No, the janitor stills the janitor.
Yeah, but he down the tool, but he don't do sidewalk, he don't do that now.
Not sidewalks, no.
No.
Is anybody?
Could you go up on the sidewalk, it's a tool, round and round off.
Right, sorry.
I thought somebody said they were snowballing.
Oh, really?
I haven't seen, I haven't even been down, I don't even turn, go that way, so I don't.
You did what, Jerry?
I thought somebody said that they were already snowballing it, cause they bought a, they bought a snowblower according to this.
Well, we got it bottom, but it's just sitting there, they ain't gonna do that until we say we're gonna pay.
Right, or split the.
Because we called it out, I went down, why, yeah, they could, I go to Bear Mountain and you can see the, the wood track coming right down the sidewalk. Could you go right up, you said, I'm gonna go, go right down, move the law, and it puts it all the way back up. Working on.
That's the school sidewalk, they can't do that. No.
Okay. I don't know.
So what do you wanna put in there?
They can't get by my finger in the middle.
Hall parties are discussing it. Road commissioner, the, um.
Select board?
Select board.
We haven't come to a decision yet.
Right.
They're out, but it was good.
Well, you could, I mean, you could still ask who, where.
And if they wanna know what?
So you, the answer to her question is, they are, she's looking if the town would hire and pay the individual, Newport Town School would reimburse the town for half the cost. So you, you don't have any answer for her at this point?
We do not.
Do they have anybody in mind that they want to hire?
They want us to hire them.
I thought that they had, Chris Hammond had talked to Mark Versi about doing that.
You know, cool?
Yes.
So they have somebody in mind?
They had talked to Mark Versi, only because he does stuff for other people in town, he would be willing, he's told.
Well, it would be, the way this reads, if the town would hire and pay the individual, Newport Town School would reimburse the town for half the cost.
Right.
So in other words, we'd have to put it out to see if anybody would be interested.
Probably if we did.
Like you do lawn mowing and whatever.
Yeah, to be fair.
From there and get their insurance and everything that they need and we have to tell them what we need is snow blow, sanded.
We have to come up with a figure, a dollar figure, or how much an hour that somebody's gonna get.
Right.
Where's that lawn mowing guy, what's he doing in?
I talked to him this fall there, went down to the, what's your, it's cool there, and he really happy with his job here.
Yeah.
I don't think he does any.
Uh, ski shop, him and his wife have a ski shop, I thought, it's what he told us.
They live right on the corner by the North Troy Village offices there.
Somebody said he bought that house in Mike Warrenville, um, over here before you turned Guantanamo.
Could be, but I know, I've seen the ski shop, it's right there in North Troy.
I know, I don't even know, no, no, no. Oh, oh, down there the.
I know, I saw him there.
That is ski shop?
I believe so, right there at the four corners.
Yeah.
Before you go to the customs.
Yeah, the old, uh, gift shop there, yeah, yeah.
I think. A hundred percent positive.
Yeah.
So do you wanna put it out to bed or are you?
Oh, no, we're discussing it, we haven't done anything to put it out to bed, we'll be.
Well, you wait on it, I'm gonna need another month now.
I know.
Really, then you're gonna go.
So is. So this will be further discussed at the next one.
I would hate to be the one that goes out there right now and tries to do it with, with, like you say, the shut offs are there and it's like, not knowing what's on the ground, somebody gotta look and see what's on the ground first.
The way it's froze.
Oh, oh, no, no.
If there's more rain coming, they're gonna have tomorrow.
Yeah, nothing, nothing's gonna happen this year, until we get.
No, they don't need this week.
Well, and what, you, you do something like that, you gotta start right from the beginning and, and.
Keep it open.
Keep it open, yeah.
There you go, take with it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Gee, you know. You know, every day I see you, every time you show up, you're out there.
Got to be.
Yeah.
Once it's backed down, it's there.
Yeah.
Don't move.
Does it make some racket when you hit that cement block?
Mike, there's things in my life that I try not to get, okay, that's one of them.
You got a stone one, oh, fucking thing.
It costs me a lot of money.
I'm sure it is.
I heard about that one.
The what?
That stone you got, you picked up the road there or whatever, you weren't happy with that either.
No, that's. Those stones, those, they're understandable, when you do something deliberately to get a problem.
Had a problem with the sander yesterday, boy, yesterday, same thing, stone is big. It's all it was, it fell down when he loaded the truck, it fell down between the headboard and the sander, and then sander turned backwards, sucked that stone out. Cause I rolled that by hand and, it was, put one paddle off, thank God we, we had it ready for the start. It was hard to, one of those.
Yeah, I don't take much sometimes.
And a lot of swearing.
And a lot of swearing.
Yeah.
Did that help?
No, but, you don't hear yourself when you're doing that.
And you know, shear pins are made for a reason.
Cause that sander don't have one.
Unless it's been replaced with three eighths bolt. They don't shear anymore.
I've done that too, but not on this top. Hydraulic, is that hydraulic? It just, it just won't turn, you know, but it will get, when it's in there, then you gotta unload it and take it all out.
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Hey, I gotta give that to you.
About that contract you were looking for?
Yeah, well.
I got an email for someone who thought I was the town hall, who has a, a lawn care business, I'll forward it to her, maybe he can, uh, I have nothing to do with it, he just thought I was the town hall. He's a lawn care company looking for work from you, I just started it, I.
The guy that we hired for the lawn mower, or this is a new guy, different guy?
I don't know who he is, he, he thought I was the town hall.
Before we can ask for somebody to give us a price on doing something, we gotta, what do we want to add down here?
Right, right.
Anyway, I'll forward it to Denise, she do whatever you want with it, I mean, they might, you might even know, I don't, I don't know nothing, you know what I mean?
All right, those guys, have you got anything else?
Uh, yeah, the, you know, our annual meeting, maybe we have for the, with the state.
Yes, yep.
Uh, they wanna schedule that, um, what about March eight at eight?
What day is that?
That is a Thursday, I believe. The town meeting's on March six, yeah, so it's Thursday, we got our select one meeting at night.
They coming here, we going in there?
No, they'll come here.
March eight at eight?
Yeah, I told them that Rick usually works Monday and Tuesday, so we, we like to do it after town meeting, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And this general roads permit for twenty six hundred, who's doing that, are we doing that?
Uh, Shane, I think will help us, we can ask them, uh, we can ask, Eric Pope and Shane will probably both be here, so we can ask them.
Okay, cause I'd have, they've been sending me emails saying that this is.
It'll be done by July.
Now that the permit has been finalized, that we are, everybody's got on.
Yeah, it'd be nice to ask a few more questions about that.
Okay, let's, uh, I'll put a note on here.
Right, so, I mean, I haven't started the process of applying to that permit.